It appears as though we're ready to move into the American Rescue Plan presentation briefing.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. Again, before we transition, just want to commend staff for the incredible work that went into that framework that was just presented. As you've noted, there was a lot of engagement and discussion with so many stakeholders, and I just really appreciate the extensive work that our staff had put into it. Now, as we move into this discussion, as you're aware, on March 11th, President Biden signed into law the 1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan. This was designed to assist the ongoing economic and public health efforts associated with the pandemic. And as you will see in this presentation, there are many layers of federal funding, not just to cities across the country, but also to local states and federal agencies and direct assistance to households. This passage of the stimulus plan is welcome news, but it also was previously discussed in the former administration. But at that time, it wasn't clear that any stimulus would be provided at the local level to cities. But as you were briefed, our staff have been working in earnest over the last few months to develop a framework for providing funding for a variety of community sectors who have been economically suffering through this pandemic. But because of this advanced work on the framework, as well as having similar discussions with council and allocating the CARES Act, as well as general fund money, staff was able to quickly develop a recommended spending plan, which was provided to council on March 12th, just one day after the American Rescue Plan was signed into law. Many in our community are unemployed, underemployed, businesses have closed, gone bankrupt, or on the brink of financial challenge. Keeping this in mind, our staff did not want to hesitate in providing a recommended spending plan. Because of the breadth of today's briefing, there will be several lead presenters. Chief Economic Recovery Officer Veronica Brusenio will kick it off and coordinate presenters from that point forward. And so now I'll turn it back over to Director Brusenio.
Thank you, Spencer. So we're happy to be here today to present to you the spending plan for the American Rescue Plan. We do have a series of presenters. We will start with our Intergovernmental Relations Office, who will be represented by our federal lobbyist, Ralph, and I'm going to kick it on over to him in the interest of time.
Good afternoon. It's good to see all of you. I haven't seen a lot of you, certainly in person, for a long time. And I'm going to, this is a very, very broad overview. It's, I think, a $1.9 trillion bill in five slides. And I would, on slide three, if we could advance to slide three. Thank you. This is just a very broad overview of how that $1.9 trillion in the American Rescue Plan Act is allocated. You'll notice the biggest chunk of money there is $424 billion to mail $1,400 checks to all taxpayers, up to $75,000 for single and $150,000 for couples. And that's just shy of 22% of the 1.9 trillion. And then the second largest pot of money is the $360 billion in state and local fiscal assistance. That comes in at about 18% of the overall package. And then you'll see tax credit and age to families is a large one, schools and higher education, of course, vaccination and public health. So it's a very broad-ranging bill. Next slide, please. And then these are just, and estimated is a key word here. No federal agency has actually done a formula run on any of this. So these are just estimates, but I think they're pretty good estimates, and they certainly give us, we're well in the ballpark. But the city's share of that $360 billion is $195.8 million. Travis County will receive $247 million from that program. And then both the city and the county will receive a direct allocation, another round of emergency rental assistance. That's on top of the emergency rental assistance that was included in the bill passed at the end of last year. And then the city is a home recipient. There's $5 billion in the bill for homelessness prevention and assistance. It's allocated via the home program, and we estimate the city's allocation there is about $11 million. The next slide, please. And then this is just to, this kind of highlights the breadth of the state and local fiscal assistance. The first four entities there on the list, including the city, will receive a direct allocation from the Treasury as their CDVG entitlement city is, or in the case of Travis County, a county. But then you'll notice every other incorporated government in the county will receive money, but they'll receive it as a sub-allocation from the state. But you kind of get the idea of the breadth of how that $360 billion is going out. Next slide, please. And then this is just a broad overview. Small business assistance, while not only small business, but mostly small business assistance is a big part of the bill. There's $25 billion in restaurant revitalization fund grants for restaurants, targeted to small restaurants. This bill includes another $1.25 billion, so bringing to $16.125 billion for shuttered venue grants. Again, those are small. There's another $7.25 billion for the Paycheck Protection Program, $15 billion for economic injury disaster loans. And then a subset, the bill includes $8 billion for airports, including your airport. And a subset of that, $800 million of that 8 billion is set aside for assistance to airport concessions, which will flow through the city. And that's just, you know, there's another, I think, $15 or $16 billion in assistance to the airlines for payroll help. There's provisions in there that provides another nine months of tax credits for paid sick and paid family leave, and expands that tax credit to local governments, by the way. And then a provision that exempts most of this assistance on this page from federal taxes. Next slide, please. And then another big, big part of this bill, the $1,400 payments have gotten the bulk of the media coverage. But this, the first one at the top of this page on aid to households, the child tax credit expansion is starting to get a lot of coverage, and rightly so. That's a major one-year expansion of the child tax credit. There's an expansion of the earned income tax credit, an expansion of the childcare independent tax credit. Those are all just for 2021. The bill includes increased Affordable Care Act subsidies for 2021 and 2022, and supplemental funding for a wide array of nutrition assistance programs. And then, you know, this is a $1.9 trillion bill, not included on this list. There's supplemental funding for the Childcare Development Block Grant, which the Texas Workforce Commission will get a share of that. There's another $500 million on top of the $400 million in the previous bill for water and wastewater utility assistance. There's money for LIHEAP, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, and so on. So a very, very wide-ranging bill. We've sent, both to city staff and then via our weekly report, we sent a more detailed summary. That's still a little bit of a work in progress, but at this point, it's getting to be pretty comprehensive and that provides a lot more detail on what's in the bill. And of course, we'll be following up as we get more information in sending that to the city. And then I think I was supposed to pass it on to Diane. Thank you.
That's correct. Diane Seiler, our interim Budget Officer, will take it to start discussing the framework for the City of Austin.
Thank you, Veronica. Thank you, Ralph. Interim Budget Officer Diane Seiler. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present staff's proposed COVID-19 spending framework to you. Next slide, please. Next slide. Before getting into the minute presentation, I want to acknowledge all the hard work and staff time that went into preparing a plan that we felt would represent council's goals. This work was accomplished not only by the directors listed here, but also many of their staff. And I just wanted to also take that moment to thank them for this work. Next slide. The spending plan being presented today totals $236.4 million. As Ralph mentioned, the City of Austin will be receiving $195.8 million, split evenly between this year and this fiscal year next. In addition, there is just over $40 million available in the general fund reserves. Spending in this plan is weighted more heavily towards FY '21 at $138.5 million, compared to the $97.9 million in FY '22. When we were developing this plan, we looked to provide as much relief to the community as quickly as possible. The spending plan recommendation commits additional resources to individuals and communities impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It continues economic support efforts to small businesses, creatives, childcare facilities, and nonprofits. And it addresses the drastic revenue loss in the hotel occupancy tax, including expected cuts to cultural arts contracts. Because housing and homelessness assistance is being provided through separate grants, this spending framework does not include these costs. However, Director Trulove will be discussing those funding sources at the end of this presentation. Included in FY '22 is a contingency amount of $39.2 million, which is 20% of the total ARP award amount. This unallocated amount can be used in the event that unanticipated needs arise. The same approach was used with the Coronavirus Relief Funds, and it proved to be very helpful. If you recall, as the pandemic lengthened and costs increased beyond our original estimates, we were able to respond to those changing needs quickly without difficulty. Next slide, please. This graph shows the relative funding amounts between each category. Economic recovery is receiving nearly 50% of the total available funds at $104.6 million. Hot-funded services are $48.3 million, and public health response is $44.3 million. However, I want to note here that the framework represents the discretionary funding only. Public health response is shown at $44.3 million because it does not include FEMA's share of those costs, and it also doesn't include the cost to provide vaccinations. The total public health cost, including the nondiscretionary amounts, is $126.8 million. The remaining $39 million is the amount being set aside for contingencies or for future allocations. Next slide. And next slide. As I mentioned, we currently have $40.6 million in the general fund reserves above the 12% level. I want to take a few minutes to walk through the changes that led to this surplus. When this year's budget was adopted, we anticipated having $133.6 million in reserves at the end of this fiscal year. This amount was based on an estimate of how much revenues we expected to receive and how much our general fund departments would spend in FY '20. Both of these estimates ended up being conservative. The loss in sales tax revenue, while significant, was lower than originally projected. At the same time, savings from the hiring freeze and extended closures resulted in $10 million in savings. We also have the benefit of the Coronavirus Relief Funds. By offsetting public safety salaries, we were able to reserve $24.9 million for the FY '21 public health costs. In addition, Travis County used a portion of their Coronavirus Relief Funds to reimburse the city for $7.4 million in shared expenses. The impact to the reserves at that time was an increase of $50.7 million. In October, council appropriated funding from the reserves for RISE 2.0 and Food Access Relief. The net impact of those actions was to lower the reserves by $10 million, bringing the total reserve balance that is above the financial policy threshold to $40.6 million. Next slide. Couple of items that I'd like to bring to your attention. First, the city still has not received a final determination from FEMA on the eligibility of the cost for the non-congregate shelters or the cost recovery percentage. This estimate assumes all non-congregate shelter costs will be reimbursed at 75%. If the city receives an unfavorable decision, the reserves will drop by $12 million, which will reduce the reserve ratio to approximately 11%. Alternatively, if all costs are eligible for full reimbursement, reserves will increase by $4 million. Second, the status provided here does not yet have the benefit of a completed general fund assessment for FY '21. Work is currently ongoing to develop revenue and spending estimates for this year and will be part of the financial forecast that you will receive next month. Next slide. And the next slide also. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide since we'll be reviewing the costs that make up each of these line items over the next couple of slides. However, I do want to mention that the costs for vaccinations are not included in this framework. The vaccines themselves will be procured and distributed by the federal government at no cost to enrolled COVID-19 vaccine providers, of which the city is one. In addition, the work and the associated cost to support the distribution and administration of these vaccines are eligible for 100% public assistance through FEMA. The city estimates it will cost $45.8 million, and FEMA has already appropriated $22.8 million of that. Council will be asked to accept and appropriate these funds, the vaccination funds, at a council meeting in the next few weeks. And I also want to note that on this table and in the next few slides are inclusive of both FEMA's share and the city's share of expenses. Next slide. Total emergency management costs are $7.6 million. The bulk of this funding, $7.2 million, is for the Emergency Operations Center. The $1.4 million in the protection of vulnerable populations is staff costs associated with the pro lodges. This is one of those examples where the funding could accurately be recorded within multiple categories, but in this case, either here or in shelters and quarantine facilities. There's also $400,000 for the leasing and maintenance of hygiene stations. Testing, the second biggest category, totals $21.7 million. It includes lab costs, the running of testing sites, tests, and other medical supplies. Also included here are costs for software enhancements, licenses, and IT contract labor necessary for data management. Shelters and quarantine facilities are estimated to cost $22.2 million through September. Included are the city's isolation facilities at $9.6 million, the pro lodges at $5.8 million, and the alternate care site at $6.8 million. This estimate reflects a gradual phasing out of these facilities, which we're beginning to see with the closing of the alternate care site. Next slide. Included in the $13.9 million for public health and safety measures is $6 million in staff costs for epidemiology and public health preparedness, and another $2.6 million for staffing agencies and overtime. Public information spending includes media buys for public service announcements, targeting families with infants, children, and youth, and other hard-to-reach populations. The final $1.5 million is for personal protective equipment. The miscellaneous category is primarily the staffing costs for administrative support and community services. And finally, two items are funded in food assistance, $3.9 million for the AISD Caregiver Meals Program and $2.5 million for the Eat Program. Next slide. Just want to note that the estimate of FEMA's contribution was derived in collaboration with staff from Hagerty Consulting based on a preliminary estimate or assessment of each type of expenditure. However, the actual reimbursement amounts will be determined by FEMA upon review of expenditure reports. And I also want to mention that the city and the county are currently negotiating a shared cost interlocal. There is the possibility that the city's expenses could be offset by county participation. However, currently, there is insufficient information on which to base an estimate. Next slide. And at this point, I'm going to turn this back over to Veronica.
Thank you, Diane. Counsel, I will take these next few slides to review the recommended spending plan for the $104.6 million towards economic recovery resources. You will see as I present this information, we took the opportunities that we just discussed in our previous presentation and highlighted how we could prioritize those resources with that guiding document. So before I move forward, I just wanted to highlight the accomplishments with CARES and general reserves that we had during our pandemic. We've distributed more than $115 million and served over 580,000 households and 1,640 businesses. There's continued need in 2021, and we're quite aware of this. There are 82,990 individuals still unemployed. There have been 28,200 jobs lost in the leisure and hospitality sector in particular. There's been about a 35% decrease in business open rate since August 2020. And finally, there's been about a 65% to 75% decrease in open rate within the leisure and hospitality sector in particular since August 2020. So the good news is the American Rescue Plan can fund the first two years of economic recovery and resiliency framework. Next slide, please. The first recommendation we have is in regards to individual assistance. We are recommending that $20 million be allocated towards individual assistance. This is within one of our opportunities that asks us to provide financial assistance to individuals and households and employees. It can be in the forms of programs like RISE 3.0. It can also look to having ways to provide more resources to households in need. And the funds can be used for rent, utilities, or other financial assistance that are required to meet the needs as a result of COVID-19. Next slide. The second component is $34.9 million that we would recommend towards business assistance. This is definitely an opportunity that was listed in the presentation we just gave. It could go towards things such as supporting research to reduce the risk of infection at large events. That could be at the amount of about $100,000. We could continue providing workshops and one-on-one coaching to help business owners, entrepreneurs, and creatives adapt their business models. This is direct employee and business assistance. This could be done at an additional $2 million. Could facilitate the creation of business cooperatives, as David had mentioned in our previous presentation, at about $400,000 in the second year of this framework. Could incentivize adaptations to produce innovations and improvements to commercial sites, which benefit employees and customers. This could be direct financial support at about $3 million. Could provide additional financial assistance to individuals, households, employees, businesses, and nonprofits through financial support. So this could be looking at a recovery lease tax abatement incentive program, Restaurant and Farm Relief Grant Program, and the Small Business Relief Grant 2.0 for a total of $27 million. Next slide. A continuation of relief that we could provide directly to businesses. We could allocate some funds to temporarily reduce or waive certain city permits or fees that businesses have to reopen safely. We would recommend about $2 million towards that. We could expedite temporary rezoning to activate and reutilize a space that we estimate to be about $200,000. We could provide flexible timing restrictions for marathons and other outdoor events, and this could be about $200,000. Next slide. We also recommend allocating some funds toward childcare assistance. As we all saw in this year, the pandemic really unearthed the need for quality childcare in our community, throughout our community. We recommend $4.5 million advocated towards this, and this could be provided to our childcare providers for relief. Next slide. The next category is $7.6 million towards community assistance. These are a series of opportunities that really, we heard from our stakeholders in looking at how we could leverage support amongst our community. So it could be for things such as $500,000 towards facilitating the creation of financial services for unbanked individuals, creatives, business owners, and entrepreneurs. We recommend allocating $100,000 towards launching an Austin Community Challenge that engages residents, creative employees, and employers in a process of co-creating solutions for local problems. We would recommend using our Small Business Challenge Studios as a model. We could create an Austin Tool Lending Library that would allow individuals to access tutorials and borrow equipment at little or no cost. We already have equipment through our Austin Public Library and Telecommunications and Regulatory Affairs that we would recommend we leverage in this regard, but we'd recommend bringing on a temporary employee to coordinate this program. We could also provide households with tools and resources to grow their own food. This would be allocated at $100,000. We could collaborate with government agencies and community partners to close the digital divide. This would be through public infrastructure, and it could be through internet access, subscriptions, tablets, digital literacy training, and virtual tech support. This could be at an amount of about $6.8 million. I would add to this, this is another area that we really saw through the pandemic was an area of great need in our community, to making sure that we close that digital divide. Next slide. Creative assistance. We're recommending that $10.1 million be allocated towards providing relief towards our creative industry. We could assist local creatives with streaming content, sorry, from local arts and cultural organizations. We recommend $500,000 be allocated towards this. We could develop a local artist registry to foster more opportunities for Austin's creatives. That would cost about $100,000. Continue dedicated relief and recovery funding for live music venues. So this would be the expansion of awards through the Live Music Venue Preservation Fund at $3 million. We recommend providing additional financial assistance to individuals. And this could be done for our creative sector through our Creative Worker Relief Grant 2.0 for the amount of $6.5 million. Next slide. We also recommend providing employee assistance at an amount of $8.5 million. This is an area where we saw great need, especially in the industries most impacted by the pandemic. So we recommend grants for restaurant and food service workers at the amount of $5.5 million. And then also working to continue to provide enhanced mental wellness resources for Austinites. This is important towards overall health and mental wellness, and we recommend that in an amount of $3 million. Next slide. We also recommend the continuation of nonprofit assistance. We administered a nonprofit relief grant this year, as council is aware. We recommend having a next round of that and nonprofit relief grant 2.0 at the amount, a total amount of $8 million. Next slide. We also recommend allocating some resources towards workforce development in the amount of $11 million. This would be a series of opportunities, including collaborating with partners on workforce development to prepare Austinites for jobs in their current and new industries in the amount of $4 million. We also recommend considering workforce development scholarships for unemployed or underemployed individuals who are committing to work locally in their trained field or sector. We recommend this at the amount of $500,000. We recommend leveraging public works and transportation projects to offer short-term employment and economic security to Austinites in the amount of $1.5 million. And we also recommend the continuation, our expansion of our Austin Civilian Conservation Corps in the amount of $5 million. Next slide. And that concludes the economic recovery portion. I will turn it back to Diane to talk about our hotel occupancy tax items.
Thank you. A significant difference between the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan is that ARP funds may be used to offset revenue loss in order to enable the governmental entity to provide its normal services. For the City of Austin, one of the hardest-hit sources of revenue during this pandemic has been hotel occupancy tax receipts. In FY '20, we collected $42.5 million lower than what was budgeted. For FY '21, this year, we are now estimating collections at $41.9 million based on year-to-date collections, which is 50% of the budgeted amount. So to put this in perspective, hot collections this year are expected to be 1/3 of the pre-pandemic budgeted amount. For the Convention Center, they incurred $76 million in revenue losses, which includes not only the hot revenue, but also facility rental, contractor revenue, and parking. They did implement significant cost containment strategies to mitigate the massive loss of revenue by significantly reducing operations, including scaling back the use of temporaries, overtime for permanent staff, and goods and services necessary for running events. They also eliminated contributions from the Convention Center Operating Fund and the Capital Fund. And the department was successful in managing the revenue loss for FY '20 via these measures. However, the deepening revenue loss is expected to result in a $31.2 million budget deficit over this year and next. Replacing most of this revenue with federal funding allows the Convention Center to avoid further reductions in staffing and program cuts. It also assures that they can meet debt service requirements, maintain existing operations, and start focusing on the economic growth of the hospitality and tourism. maintain existing operations, and start focusing on the economic growth of the hospitality and tourism sectors, and ultimately be ready to emerge from this pandemic successfully without the use of reserves. Next slide. In addition to providing $28.3 million in funding to the Convention Center, there is $20 million for the Cultural Arts Historic Preservation and Live Music Fund, which would fully offset the revenue loss in these funds. Cultural Arts would receive $7.8 million. This allows us to fully fund this year's contracts and extend the more than 700 contracts one more year. The $10 million allocated to Historic Preservation Fund would allow for one more year of heritage contracts and also enables us to continue investing in the planned capital projects. The funding for the Live Music Fund would go directly into programs which are still under development to support Austin's venues, commercial music businesses, and musicians. The last topic I want to cover before turning this over to Director TruLove are the next steps in this process. Staff is planning on bringing forward a budget amendment on April 8th to appropriate the $40.6 million in general fund reserves and to accept and appropriate the first half of the ARP funds. It was envisioned that staff's recommendation would be used as a basis for council's discussion and possible amendments at that meeting. However, I also want to acknowledge that this plan may need to be adjusted pending on council's decision Thursday on the resilient ATX resolution. Next slide. And now I turn it over to Director TruLove.
Thank you, Diane. Can you guys hear me? Okay, good. So I wanted to cover a few aspects of the American Rescue Plan that are directly related to housing and homelessness. The first is approximately $22 million that's going to be coming our way for continuation of our emergency rental assistance program, which we refer to as RENT. We think that based on what we know about this fund so far, the restrictions are going to align closely with what we currently have as part of RENT 3.0, which, as we all know, launched about a week and a half ago. And so we should be able to continue on without much interruption as we move forward there. Next slide, please. We are also receiving through the Home Formula Grant approximately $11 million that can be used directly to provide services and for homelessness. This can be used for tenant-based rental assistance, for development and support of affordable rental housing pursuant to the home program, transitional housing, housing counseling, homelessness prevention services, and potentially the acquisition of non-congregate shelters that can be converted to permanent supportive housing, which closely aligns with our motel acquisition strategy. So we will be working closely with the Homeless Strategy Office on the deployment of these dollars. This piece will likely result in or require an action plan amendment, so you will see more items from council that will come your way before we can actually make use of these dollars. But we don't, excuse me, we haven't received any federal guidance yet on how this process needs to work yet, so we're on the lookout for that, but we will prioritize it once we get the guidance in from HUD. Next slide, please. So there is a homeowner assistance fund that is coming our way. We don't have a lot of information about this yet. This will be allocated to the state and will be deployed out through TDAHCA. And so that may be money that they ask us to apply for, and we deploy through a program at the local level, and it could be a program that they deploy at the state level. But it is similar to our emergency rental assistance program, but for homeowners, so can be used for mortgage assistance in related aspects there. So we're very excited to see a homeowner assistance fund be considered as part of the American Rescue Plan. Next slide, please. And lastly, there is an allocation at the national level of $5 billion for emergency incremental Section 8 vouchers to help transition homeless people or people at risk of being homeless to stable housing. These are funds that will carry through till fiscal year 30. They will be allocated to HACA, the Housing Authority for the city of Austin, and HATSE, the Housing Authority for Travis County. We do not know how many vouchers that that will amount to or any details yet. We're hoping to find out in April or May, and we will continue to share information on that. But we are excited to see any increase in the number of vouchers that are going to be coming the direction of Austin. So thank you for that. Next slide, please. I think we're turning it now back to mayor and council for any discussion, and you have all of the presenters here to provide any assistance that we can provide. Thank you.
I would add, in addition to our presenters, we have some of our coworkers that can ask our colleagues that can answer any questions if there are questions on items we presented that might be in their departments. Thanks.
Again, mayor and council, this was a lot of information. We recognize that a lot of work from staff went into ensuring that we were able to present this to you in a comprehensive way as we make the considerations going forward about how we both look at the framework and decisions around funding in the future. But with that, I'll turn it back to you, mayor, for opening up for questions.
I appreciate that, and let me begin by saying, again, both this and the last resolution, tremendous amount of work being exhibited and just really appreciated. And up until just several weeks ago, I would have been all over this as an approach, because I think that you did a really good job of taking a look at the priorities that the council had identified in the way that we spent the monies that came to us last year associated with COVID. Money is now a little bit more flexible, but I think you did a really good job. And you've identified just incredibly important needs that exist in the community. There's not a single recommendation of spending that is not legitimate and needed and valid and important. And I would like to do all of those things and more of those things. Colleagues, lay out, at the same time we're discussing this, the resolution on Thursday, 111. And I appreciate the cosponsorship of council members Tovo and Alter and Kassar and Fuentes and Kitchen joining in on the bulletin board. And what it basically suggests is that we pause just for a second to examine what could be an alternate approach to COVID-related dollars that are coming to us. And I'll tell you that this was first brought to my attention in the U.S. Conference of Mayors when I started hearing about mayors that were stepping forward either by themselves regionally in areas where the city and the county are the same, but also some places where cities seem to be joining with counties. And they were taking a little bit different approach. They were identifying what was the largest priority or a very small group of priorities that they thought was top of mind for most all the people in their community that they had never really been able to move off of the front burner, in part because it's near impossible to ever mass the resources that are necessary to really do that. What I was listening to the mayor of Chicago talk about a growing alliance to deal with crime and with gun possession. And the question they were asking themselves was, if we really wanted to just take that off our challenge list, what would it take for us to do that? And does this moment give us that opportunity? Other cities looking at a particular utility infrastructure plan that they're not able and have not been able to do and have been dealing with for a long time. Things that when they poll their communities always seem to appear as the top one or two things that their communities identify as, do something about this. In our community, there are just several of those. The one that we've identified as number one is homelessness. Up there is childcare and workforce development, jobs, food insecurity. But you know, if, what would happen if we were able to actually put the resources necessary to affect a five-year plan to end homelessness in our community and to move all of the people in campsites and in tents on our streets, out of campsites and off the streets and into permanently permanent supportive housing or on a very real path to permanent supportive housing? What if we did that? I mean, is that actually a possibility? Could we do that? In addition to the funds that are coming to us, the $195 million that we have available to us in the resolution 111 on pages two and three and going over to four, a list of lots of other funding programs that I think might be available for some of the things that were listed by staff in the allocation programs. What if we just really took a real focus area on those and went out and won a lion's share of those things? I note that Save Our Stages application process is taking initial applications in the next two or three weeks, I think. And many of these programs are first come, first served. $16 billion for Save Our Stages. $20 million for restaurants. Maybe like we did in the past with foundation communities and helping people come back with bigger refund checks into our community. What if we spent the next two weeks making sure that everybody in our city that was a valid recipient for Save Our Stage money was there on the day the application process opened? Our community just hit send. What if we could bring home? Because again, it's first come, first served on restaurants all through the community. We're just prepared and ready to hit send the moment those processes opened. What if we joined with Travis County? Travis County got $195 million compared to estimate, compared to our, I mean, $245 million compared to our $195, $197. Last go-around, Travis County couldn't take their money and invest it in the city because you weren't allowed as a county to invest money in an incorporated area. That's not the case this time. And that's one of the reasons why Travis County got such a large allocation is based on the population in the city. I was mentioning to the judge that, you know, there are a million people in the city and a million three in the county that 10/13ths of what was going to the county maybe ought to be considered for expenditures in the city or projects that we could agree on was real important. And I know that to some of the county commissioners, homelessness and mental health support, behavioral support substance use challenges, huge priority for them too. What if we combine with each other and we weren't trying to allocate $195, but we were trying to allocate $400 million? Could we in fact take everybody who is in tents off our streets in so many years? I know that we don't, so this resolution doesn't direct that. It just says, hey, before we start spending, what would it look like if we were to really join with Travis County, other regional partners maybe, or just Travis County? Because we overlap so much. And we picked one or two or whatever it is that we could pick and truly make a generational transformative change, not just dealing with relief. When we got the original COVID dollars, we were putting tourniquet over open wounds in our city. But we have an opportunity now maybe to actually come out of this virus in a more resilient, in a way that just doesn't provide relief and recovery, but provides for true transformative change. I recognize that we couldn't do that in all of the areas that we would want to do it in, but maybe we could do it in some. And it also doesn't mean we don't spend any money on anything else. I mean, clearly, there are some things that rise to such a level of emergency that we're going to, we have to put dollars against a public health response. You know, we have to make sure we still do testing and still have the protective equipment and still have the facilities to isolate people, protect people. I mean, whatever what we need in Austin Public Health, we still need to do. And some other programs too where there's like an emergency. But what if we paused for just a second and engaged with Travis County? Could we in fact take our most significant challenge or two or three and really, really move the bar so that in five years and 10 years and 15 years and 20 years, people look back at this moment and said, you know, that virus was horrible. Its health impact was horrible. Its economic impact was horrible. But that was also the moment in time when we could take one of our most significant challenges and just fix it. So this resolution doesn't direct that, and it doesn't pick that. But what it says to our staff is, before we start allocating dollars, let's see what that scenario looks like. Maybe Diana, working with the summit, comes out with a plan that actually has a five-year plan to end homelessness or a way to scale heal up to all of the encampments in the city. And maybe it's a $200 million or $250 million, whatever it is. I don't know what the plan will be. But what if we put huge component of our dollars toward that? And then we go to St. David's Foundation and Seton Foundation and the other big donors in our community and say, government is willing to put a real significant sum against this challenge. Will you meet us on a similar scale? This is our community's challenge to take, our goal is to take this challenge and fix it or resolve it or provide for it in ways that we've never had a chance to before and may never have a chance to again. That's what 111 is. And my hope is that we get our staff. And this is a very different assignment, I recognize, manager, than anything that we've asked staff to do. The work that staff did was very, was perfectly in line and in keeping with the direction that this council has given, as evidenced by the work we did on the previous Sunday. And I appreciate that work and a lot of the programs. Even if we did 111, might be able to be funded by some of these other various programs that exist, don't know. But that's what 111 is, and that's what I would support. Just trying to take a different kind of a more strategic, a little bit longer term, focus on this opportunity that's in front of us. And I appreciate the assistance, the sponsors, in tweaking the ideas and adding to them for the resolution that's in front of us. P.O.
Yeah, and I totally agree with what you've been saying. And I just don't know, I want to be part of the resolution, but I don't want to go in violation of any kind of quorum for weeks. So, but I really support that, you know, especially with the RISE money. I don't know if this particular, if there's any restriction to it, like the CARE Act. But you know, if there is, then we would, I would definitely like to also work with the county on some, with the RISE money so that, you know, we have a lot of gentrification going on in Austin. And a lot of people are moving out there into the incorporated area. We also need to look out because there are workforce here that comes into our city. And it would be great if we could work with the county and take care of some of the problems that they're not able to take care of and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Kassar and council member Kitchen.
Mayor, thanks for laying that out, and I want to speak to the same point because I really appreciate all of the sort of immediate disaster work we did together, especially alongside your team, Director Resenyo and you, Director TruLove, in March, April, May of last year. And we're still not out of the woods yet, but we, I think. Uh, and we're still not out of the woods yet, but we uh I think are, it's incumbent upon us to figure out what the long term plan is for these dollars. And so I really support what you've said, Mayor, around um making sure that we allocate more of this funding to addressing homelessness, not just the funding that is set aside for homelessness, not just city dollars, but also bringing forward the uh and collaborating with the county to really um reduce homelessness in a in a much bigger way than we ever could have before. So I'm really supportive of that. And then I also want to draw attention to the points in the resolution where we want to make sure that the funding that we deliver also creates a little sort of long term transformative change that we need. And, you know, we've heard for so long how our county jail is the biggest provider of mental health services in our county. It shouldn't be that way, and this creates a real opportunity and collaboration with the county uh to not have the jail be a mental health facility for the, not have the jail be housing because we know that we can actually provide better housing and better mental health care than a jail um when we make investments in childcare. Of course, it's been really important for us to try to save childcare centers, but I think we can make our childcare investments in a way that we increase the availability and affordability of childcare long term. Essentially that we don't want to just go back to the way things were before this because the way things were before this. We all know there still wasn't good enough accessibility or affordability or quality of childcare for everyone. I think the same way about workforce development. If we're going to be making this a really significant investment in that area, then I think the city should be able to ask for a lot more in terms of good jobs with good wages and benefits from employers that are ultimately benefiting from the workforce development investments that we might make at a greater scale than ever before because it's not just a benefit to workers, it really also is a benefit to those businesses for us to step in and fund that much more workforce development. I think the same thing about the digital divide investments that you listed here, Director Resenyo. Uh, I'm not suggesting this is what's in your plan, but just to make things simple, I'm less interested in just how it is we get people hotspots and more in how we address longer term access to affordable broadband. So that again, the investments we make make long term change. You know, instead of just eviction moratoriums, how is it that we create long term stability for tenants and reduce housing insecurity long term here? So again, that's that's what I see in this resolution. I think that's the opportunity that we have. And that opportunity really exists if we pause, work together with the county and and try to focus our investments uh in a way that makes sort of transformative change.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen. Thank you.
Okay, um, I I want to add my voice to support um as a as a co-sponsor of one eleven. I I really think that we owe it to um the community um to to stop and take a look at what opportunity we might have uh working in conjunction with the with the county to make some transformative change. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, Mayor. Uh, I don't think that that um, I think that that um that effort works in conjunction with what the effort that our staff has put into the current framework that they've presented. I think it's a matter of of uh working with the the county to see where we can get synergies and where we can do uh more, where we can make transformative changes as you have suggested. I do consider uh our uh uh addressing homelessness as a number one priority. We have said that it is for a number of years and we just although we've put a lot of effort behind it, uh, there's more that we need to do and it has, it's not really been our number one priority in terms of how we allocate dollars. And so I think that we we really need to to um to see if this this is an opportunity where we could finally finally do that. I would encourage that we also look um any synergies with the other communities that are in Travis County. I understand that their dollar amounts are significantly smaller and they may not have any bandwidth to join with us. But we should at least um extend that conversation to see if there are some efforts with uh Flugerville, Westlake, um other um um other uh entities. Uh, because this is a community wide issue with regard to homelessness. I appreciate also, Mayor, that you mentioned that there are other other needs and that that we can also consider as part of this pro- process, perhaps. We can think about it. I just want to to pick one of them, and that is the uh the needs that our creative community has because of the loss in the hot tax dollars. If we could at least make them whole, um, that would be something I would want to consider. But 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 um anyway, so I I I just want to to say that I support one eleven. I think it's the kind of uh transformative thinking that we need to be doing right now, and um I appreciate you bringing it forward.
That's good. And thanks for joining on as a sponsor and Councilmember Entree. There's not a problem with announcing your co-sponsorship at a meeting like this. Uh, so thank you for that. Councilmember Pold and Councilmember Togo.
Thanks. Yeah, I uh when I was reading one eleven, I wanted to, it occurred to me that the folks who have lost in a really big way and who haven't been um a main focus for our financial support over the last year plus our our creatives and the cultural funds that were cut because of the lack of hotel occupancy tax coming in through the convention center. So I wanted to get some sense of support for and commitment to trying to replace those funds to make sure that all of those folks who had planned, because I think their funding is on a two year rolling basis, that they were certainly counting on that income. And so um maybe Director Resenyo or Mayor Adler, um one or both of you, can you offer up any sense of commitment to helping our cultural arts funding recipients?
From what I said, I would love to help the cultural arts funding. Um, I think the kind of the threshold question for me that I would like to hear from staff is uh if we were to make a really transformative change in in homelessness, what would that be? If we were to make one in childcare, what what does that mean? Because I don't know the answer to that question. And would we hope the staff could come back for that? Uh, but I recognize, you know, and what is in in job creation and and workforce development and food insecurity, I just don't know what it means to make a transformative investment of the kind that in five, ten, fifteen years, people will look back and say, thank God that investment was made by then, back then, because look where we are now as a result of that. But I would, I I know that our staff has taken a look at the cultural arts funding and has put in a provision in the work that they've done. And I agree with Councilmember Kitchen that all that work also comes forward too uh as we're asking those questions. I just don't know how far we can spread dollars and still make transformative and generational change. And part of that, Councilmember Paul, I think is going to be does Travis County want to join with us and to what degree do they want to? And what are the kind of the joint priorities we can agree with with them? Uh, but but obviously, that was something that was hit real hard. And I also think that there's money built into some of these other funds that are designated for uses other than the one ninety five we got that I think would provide potentially some relief to some of those industries and players. And I would want to make sure that as a city we're figuring out how to help those entities leverage those dollars. Because every dollar we bring in that way is a dollar that doesn't have to come out of our one ninety five and the county's two forty five.
So so the main thing I would say in response to that is that these are contracts that the artists thought that they were going to be funded. And we have worked over time with our staff to backfill and replace funding um financial support for folks who didn't get what they were expecting, like, you know, making sure they don't get kicked out of their apartment. That was huge. Helping replace their income, helping them keep jobs, get training for new jobs. But this one little sector that I would argue brings the vibrancy and and the cachet to our city that makes this a real visitable city is just being I'm sure, I'm sure it's not being just slotted on by. But while we are giving lists of all the different groups and sectors that we want to help, I'm not hearing as much from our local homegrown uh cultural arts folks who have been relying on their cultural funding through the contract program through EDD for literally decades. And so just another pitch for them because these are your neighbors. And uh they're big and small. They're the ballet, they're the opera. Um, they're also the mariachi bands and the yoga studios and the dance troops. So um, that's Austin. And I want to make sure that we reserve a space for them in our planning in our rhetoric and in our programming and allocations, financial allocations.
And I hear you. There's nothing in this resolution that takes anything off the table. And there's obviously a a sweet spot in my heart for for that particular category of funding as well.
I think that is for everybody. So I I just wanted us all to step up to the plate and acknowledge that and then make that real for them because they're feeling kind of neglected and overlooked and that it's not real. Thanks.
Councilmember Alter. Oh, I'm sorry. It was Councilmember Togo was next. Sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. I have um a large number of questions and had really hoped we would have an opportunity to kind of dig in and and talk about this and some other issues uh as they relate to the agenda for Thursday. And, you know, I think, I mean, we've we've been um in our session so long, I'm afraid we've run out of time really to kind of have that ki- kind of conversation. So I don't know how we make space for that, but I would I would ask that we do that because I I think especially with something this huge, I think it really requires a lot of a lot of conversation among us and we can't all have that conversation because of quorum rules. And I have, I have um I'm just trying to figure out here how to split my my own time between questions to staff about some of the information they provided and my general thoughts about this approach. Let me let me start with the latter and then I'm going to switch to the former. But I I want to say, um, Mayor, I appreciate, one, I really appreciate all of the tremendous staff work to provide us with their recommendations for how we might organize our spending around uh this this uh money. I also really appreciate the Economic Development Department's specific recommendations for their department as well. And I concur with the mayor and others uh in their perspective on this. I think we we do need to pause and really think, absorb all of the information and really think about how we want to use and invest these dollars in transformative change. And I absolutely support a really significant investment in ending homelessness in this community. And we can talk more about, you know, how we're going to agree on what those um elements are, but you know, we have plenty of, well, let me just leave it there. Um, I do want to say that I think it's very critical and I think we're still talking about what this language looks like in the resolution, but I think it's very critical that we have a process here at the city that helps us identify those other funding options that are beyond this money. And so, for example, the conversation came up around uh bridging the digital divide. Well, based on my really initial information, it looks like there is, you know, separate money coming coming from the federal government for broadband. You know, and maybe our staff have some information about that. But if that's true, you know, I want to utilize that kind of funding um to bridge the digital divide rather than our our portion to do so. Uh, the same is true in in pretty much all of these categories. So we we really need a process that is thoughtful, city manager, we need a team that is and you have assembled a team that is broad based, but we need, we need to what that process is going to be like, that that is able to very quickly assess all of the other funding so that we're we're um being as strategic as possible. And again, I know your staff have have done a lot of that work in coming forward with their recommendations, but now we need to meld that with the perspective that that the council is is asking you to consider as well. One thing that the mayor said that I think needs really immediate attention and and that is, to what extent can we very quickly, right away, stand up navigators to help apply for that money that is becoming available right away? So the restaurant funding, the Save Our Stages fund. How can we, I mean, I I hate to say this, but as David Gray and others um indicated through their, they've been doing this all year and I know they must be exhausted, but but we have yet another opportunity and another challenge of of immediately responding and and providing, you know, providing some assistance to our community in a way that is, that really builds on on the expertise they've gained over these last years in all of the different programs, including the pandemic programs, but also ask them to take on kind of a new challenge. So, City Manager, what are your thoughts in in terms of how quickly how quickly um we could as a city kind of respond to those, you know, make that our first focus? How we, how we provide some level of navigation services um to to restaurants and venues and others in our community who could be ready to to apply for that other funding. And then I have a couple of questions, but I think I can limit it to just one after this one.
Well, thanks, Councilmember. And I know that this has been a conversation about just not within what we can do as a city, but how do we leverage the the networks and the partnerships that we have. Um, so all after this discussion, give us staff to think of other ways and we we can leverage our own resources, but at a minimum, I think really amplifying uh the communications around these, making sure that we are are really aggressive and getting the word out about how people can take advantage of these opportunities. But then more importantly, we know that there are ways in which we can communicate that might be uh uh helpful in how we leverage our partners. So really working with them and using their own networks. But I think there might be some things that we'll come back to you and maybe in the terms of a memo or update on what we could be adding to this effort from the city staff.
Yeah, it sounds like it's at a very, very short timeframe. So you know, perhaps we could revisit this again on Thursday in the context of the resolution that's on the agenda, kind of what resources could be deployed to this effort. You know, are there, are there um particular, you know, particular staffs or particular organizations? I think you've identified part of it is just getting the word out to our partner organizations and all the individuals who might benefit from it. But if there is an opportunity to very quickly, you know, provide some level of assistance so that our our local folks cannot just apply, but can be really successful. And, you know, that that takes that takes some guidance sometimes to be able to really successfully compete on that on that front. I had just a simple informative information question. I'm super concerned about uh one of the pieces of information in this presentation that talks about the FEMA decision with regard to non-congregate shelter. And I know that has been a ongoing conversation about whether FEMA would would reimburse for that. I, you know, I see this as something that that cities across the across the U S have done. And so are they having challenges getting it funded by FEMA as well, reimbursed by FEMA?
Thank you.
I'm not sure.
I'll I'll ask Diana to chime in in a second, but I did want to leverage this discussion because as you know, we continue to be pushing forward and then waiting uh on the additional guidance from our federal partners about how these monies can be used. And that is part of the challenge that we might be seeing in how quickly we can get some of these recommendations back to you because we are still awaiting those parameters. And so I want to first turn it over to our CFO to describe some of those dynamics and then uh ask Diane to specifically address the question that you raised. Ed?
Um, thank you, City Manager. And I think that's an important point. Um, I, one of the concerns I have with the item one eleven as it's written is for staff to come back by April twelfth. I think there is small likelihood that we'll even have guidelines from the Treasury Department on how we can specifically use the hundred and ninety six million dollars. It was um at least a month after the funds were released to the city before, um, for the coronavirus relief funds before we received Treasury guidelines. And then for months after we received them, they continued to evolve and change. Um, so we're certainly going to be dealing with that dynamic again. Broadly, the funds that have been allocated to cities and counties are specifically referred to as the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds are supposed to be used to respond to the COVID nineteen public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, you know. So that's very broad language and the devil will be in the details in regards to how creative we can be in using those funds and applying them to the types of transformational investments um that are being discussed. Um, and then there is timelines too. Um, while um the timeline for spending the funds is much more generous than previously, um, they need to be expended by um December thirty first of twenty twenty four. So there still are time constraints and there's there still is a connection to um responding to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. But my main point is I don't know that even by April twelfth, we'll have the Treasury guidelines yet. I think everything that staff has proposed to you um would have qualified within the guidelines of the Corona- guidelines of the coronavirus relief fund. And I would strongly suspect that the new guidelines for these funds will be, um, at least as broad as the coronavirus relief fund and certainly broader in some cases such as revenue replacement. But I just wanted to put that out there, that, um, I think we're going to be limited in terms of coming back and saying, here's some ideas for how we could maybe fund more transformative pro, um, programs, short of having those guidelines.
Ed, thanks. And I'll, I have an idea that I'll share with the mayor, um, on, on that timeframe. Another thing I wanted to talk about, though, before I forget about cultural, the cultural arts, you know, again and again, we've talked, I mean, before, prior to the pandemic, we had, we, we had, um, lots of cultural arts and live music venues, um, really facing market pressures. And, and the answer to that is, you know, the longer term answer to that is for more of them to own their own real estate. That's one answer, right? So I hope that too, as we look to how we can assist cultural arts, then you, you know, even outside homelessness, if we can think about how we could affect more transformational change in some of those sectors too, I think that would be ideal. To me, of, of, an expenditure, I mean, an investment through the EDC of potential real estate in some of the areas where we know we're losing those venues would be, would be more of a sustainable, um, investment than, than perhaps some of the ways in which we've invested those funds in the past. And then I, I stopped that FEMA question, I'm sorry. But thanks, Ed. Diane, I think you were going to answer the FEMA question.
Um, I was going to give you a cursory answer because I'm not the person who's actually been closely involved with it. What I can tell you is that, yes, there have been, um, other entities who have had similar, um, similar expenditures, and they've been approved by FEMA. We have to go through the state FEMA first, TIDMS, and they've given us the, um, I guess, preliminary, uh, decision that, that our non-congregate shelters are, um, do not meet their, their standards, right? And so I know that we're appealing to, uh, the, the federal, um, emergency management. So that's kind of where, what we're, we've been waiting for is a, is a higher level determination at this point. And I know that our lobbyists are working with, um, with, uh, FEMA on that.
Thank you. And so I assume they're doing, they're compiling all of the examples and other places outside of Texas that are using their FEMA funding, are getting FEMA reimbursements for just the very same thing. New York City, I, I think has like 140 hotels, for example, that they have rented to house individuals experiencing homelessness during the pandemic.
That, that's true. But to add to this, it's more complicated because FEMA's guidance also, um, is different among, among regions. So, you know, it's not just, yeah.
Gotcha. I did find that. Okay, thank you for that background.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate all the work that went into, um, this framework. And as the mayor kind of alluded to, three or four weeks ago, I would have been all over this and said, you know, this is definitely how we need to proceed. But as the ARP, um, has materialized and we see the, the magnitude and the opportunities as well as all of the many different pots, um, I think we need to pause and rethink this. And I apologize if I repeat anything that anyone said. I had to step out for about 15 minutes, um, but I feel really strongly about this. And that's why I'm proud to be a co-sponsor on this. And I think maybe we're thinking about this a little bit, um, too, too rigidly. Um, and that what we have here is an opportunity to say, if we had this extra money, what could we solve in our city or what opportunity could we seize? Um, and I, I don't believe that we have to be strictly constrained by the ARP guidelines. We have $40 million in our reserves. And that money we can spend on anything we want, anything we want. And $40 million invested even just in the, in, in homelessness, childcare and workforce development and food security could make a big dent if it was strategically placed. And we know that some of it will be useful. So I think there's a lot of value in still dreaming and thinking about how we could do this. And the opportunity to work cooperatively with the county in ways that we have not been able to do, at least since I've been on council, and as far as I know, is an opportunity, um, that we should seize while we have the cooperation, while we have, um, the interest, and we have many, many shared, um, choices here. So I really think that, um, you know, we can move, we can move around the deadline, but we really should be thinking about stuff. For childcare in particular, United Way has a plan. They are modifying their plan in light of the other money that is out there. They have a plan, like, these are the experts. Success from Six has been working on this. They have a plan, and we ought to take the time to look at it and see if we invested the amount of money, which may be 20 million dollars. I don't know what the exact money that they landed on, but we need, we, we need to take a time to pause on it. And if we could split that between us and the county, that would be, you know, amazing. I want to also, um, you know, reiterate what's been said about the navigators. You know, maybe, maybe the answer is, well, we can't get you the answers in two weeks because we're going to spend all of our energy making sure everyone in our city takes down as much of this money as possible, which will leave us the space to be more creative. Um, and to me, that would be a, a really, uh, possible way that we could go forward in thinking about this. Um, AISD, I talked with one of the trustees, and she said that she thought that the superintendent would give us space and would give us computer access and be, they would be really willing to help us with the navigator prospect. Um, you know, I have long been saying that we had to move to more resilience than survival. Um, and we rightly chose a mix when we did the CARES Act spending framework in May and June. Uh, but now is the time to think big. Now is the time to, to really set us up to be resilient. And, um, if that takes a little bit longer time while everyone's getting their, their tax refunds and other stuff, we, we, we need to, we really do need to do this.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. And to build off what Councilmember Alter was saying, I mean, I'm right there with you. This is such an incredible time for us to think in a transformative way. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing forward this resolution. I think there's a lot of synergy between the resolution and also with the, the update that staff gave. And one that I want to draw specific attention to is related to food insecurity. I mean, we saw when the pandemic first hit, just how much we needed to build and create a resilient food system. And when the winter storm disaster happened, yet again, we saw the gaps and the need to improve on our food system and to fully address it. And so giving us the time to work with our county leaders to come up with a transformative way to deal with food access is incredibly exciting for me, especially as someone who represents a significant portion of Dale Valley that is both within the city and in the county. This is a great opportunity for us to come together and, and to really innovate. And so I'm excited about that opportunity. And I'm also wanted to echo Councilmember Paul's, um, sentiment around cultural arts funding and, and, and say that Moss was supportive of us figuring out a way to fully fund our cultural arts programming here in Austin. Thank you.
Uh, with respect to the time deadline in this, the, the April 12th deadline, and could easily be, Kathy, that you have a better way to handle this. You alluded to it a second ago. I just point out that the wording in it doesn't ask staff to come back with the framework on, on the April 12th. It asks staff to come back with a framework, but it asks for initial recommendations by the 12th. And it could be that your recommendation, when you come back on the 12th, is that we continue to spend no time on anything other than navigators, uh, at least for another week or two. Uh, so it was to, to give that measure of flexibility to staff to actually think big, to think about what happens if you actually had license to make real transformative change on our biggest priorities. Uh, but it does ask you to come back, uh, on April 12th and, and kind of talk through with us, uh, what you're, what you're thinking or what your initial conversations with Travis County were like or, or whatever. But I think that the, the intent is, is to do this right, just because it's such a huge opportunity to, to really leverage and, and, and do it right. So it wasn't for a final product on the, on the 12th.
And good to hear.
Yes.
I was just going to say, I mean, I, I think that Councilmember Alter and I and you have, have hit on what I texted you about, um, in terms of the deadline, the timeframe, but that's exactly what I was suggesting, that maybe, um, that maybe we add some language in there or be, um, provide some, some more direction to the manager about what we would like to see in terms of navigation and, and kind of a very short timeframe or, because that has such an immediate, we have such an immediate need. So basically, I think, um, Alice, you captured kind of where I was going on that, which is that, that, that seems to be the immediate priority. We don't have the guidelines. We need to do some more thinking and absorb the various recommendations about, about the bigger spending chunk, but we know we have these other funding opportunities available for people in our community. So maybe that's, maybe that's the piece that has the real short timeframe.
Kathy.
For our resolution.
If I had seen your text, I would have just recognized you first. Sorry. Uh, Ed, Ed Kitchen.
Yes, and on the navigator, I just want to remind people that there's a, there's a whole range of buckets, including the small business loans, and that those would be helpful for our creative spaces also. I think the navigator idea is great. I think it, uh, if it can be done in a way that really, um, you know, is, is, um, specific to helping people. Uh, and we've named a, a different kinds of folks, and I didn't want us to forget that the creative sector can apply for those bonds too, for those, uh, funds too, and it's not just, um, music.
Heck, there's even a special fund for community navigators. Uh, Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I forgot to mention one thing, which is that, um, what I heard, um, Diane mentioned was that they were going to be bringing some of the health spending forward in April. Um, and I just want to be clear, for me, the way I'm thinking about it, this has nothing to do with the health bucket. It's sort of, you know, the health department has decided we need to spend X amount on health, the 81 million. Um, and I fully expect that we will spend that and that we have got to defer to the experts on that for the health-related stuff. I would love to see us get, you know, more of that reimbursed and, and whatever. Um, but I don't think this process has to slow down any of the health money. And I think what it does do is say, maybe we're not using our reserves on the health, and we're going to make that decision later. And then anything we can use ARP money on, we're going to use, um, you know, first. And so maybe we start spending health money, the ARP money on the health stuff, which we know we can spend it on, as far as I can understand. Um, and we hold off on some of the other allocations. But, um, I think that we could move forward with many of the, the health things that I'm sure have had a lot longer gestation time period, um, in terms of testing and other stuff, um, you know, of what needs to happen. Um, you know, obviously, there may be some, some things in there that might not be the, the absolute best use of dollars, but I'm, I'm, I'm ready to, on the health stuff, um, say, okay, we just have to spend the money to do that to keep our, to keep our community healthy. Um, so I did want to mention that. Um, and then also on the workforce development, um, you know, just in terms of, again, emphasizing that I don't know that we are that far from identifying what these transformative things are if we are freed from the, um, confines of scarcity that we've been operating in. So for workforce development, similarly, um, you know, you, you highlighted the Austin Civilian Conservation Corps, you know, there's a plan in there with, that, that has, is in the works. Um, I think it's a little bit more money than what you said, but the county also wants to collaborate on that. Um, and so that's an opportunity. And then workforce solutions, um, you know, we, we put some seed money into the workforce, the Rework Now program, and they have the whole plan of what has to happen next, which would then allow us to train our plumbers and our tradesmen and our computer scientists, et cetera, um, that we need, which would then in turn help, um, impact affordability as well as providing the jobs. Um, and I know there's been a lot of work on the food security issue. It's one that I'm less familiar with. And, you know, if we wanted to add a fifth pillar on the creative sector, um, I think that would be fine, though I, I think the assumption was that that was being covered by some certain other buckets that were coming down, um, specifically at, at this point in time. Um, but we could certainly, um, consider that. So I don't know that for the things, because these are things that we've been dreaming about for a long time, I don't know if the steps to get to that place of the general buckets is that far, far off.
If, if I may.
Diane.
Thank you. I just want to, um, address the $40 million in reserve. While in the presentation, we talked about the different categories, we didn't necessarily identify which funding source those categories were coming from. And so we actually, uh, said that for the RISE 3.0, we, we used the same assumptions for this, uh, ARP money that we did for the coronavirus relief fund so that, um, the $20 million for the, uh, RISE 3.0 would have come out of the reserves, so that, that's 20 million. And then the $5 million for the, um, Austin Civilian Conservation Corps would have come out of the, um, reserves. So that really left $15 million that we were using to fund the public health. The rest of the public health was going to come from the ARP. Um, and I, I'm just putting that out there so that you're aware that there are certain items included in that plan that if we wanted to go forward with, we would expect we'd be using, um, reserves for them.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't, that wasn't clear. It, it sort of said we were spending our, our 40 million on our health bucket. So, um, and that's how I read it. I'll, I'll, I'll look back at it, um, but that's how it was presented. But I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the clarification, um, in there and, um, on that. Um, the other thing, I just wanted to go back to my comments earlier about the United Way and just, you know, ask staff as you're, as you're filling up on 111 to be in touch with United Way, um, and Success by Six Coalition that has been operational for many years and working on these questions, um, and is building out a framework, given the other childcare money, um, to complement it in some really interesting and important ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have 15 minutes left, uh, in our DOD. I don't know if you want to continue discussing this. And Morgan, I don't know if there's an executive session item that, uh, we really do need to take up today, uh, but my guess is we're down to just, uh, another item or two.
Yeah, I don't think we have time for the executive session today.
Okay. We'll move, we'll move that last item, E5, over to, uh, Thursday. Uh, we're gonna pick up E2, E3, 4. There's gonna be a message board post, a special call meeting next week. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna go ahead and.